Call the. City Council Budget Workshop for June twenty ninth. Tomorrow at five thirty eight P M. President's gonna be Gene Hoffman, Kyle Lewis, and Josh DeSalvo. Mayor Mike Favre. Uh, City Clerk Mike Riso, Caitlin. Okay, um, if you'll just walk us through some of the changes on what's presented to us.
And I would just note, for the record for yourself, you just don't have a quorum at this point.
Yeah, no quorum at this point.
Missing several members.
Just be discussion only. Okay, um. Looks like a pretty good increase in real estate revenue projected.
Off of your taxes, you mean?
Yes, mhm.
So, if you will, I've prepared some notes to kind of take y'all through the budget that we've submitted to y'all last night. And strictly the general funds, it's eighteen pages, a lot of numbers. Uh, does go by department by department, starting with the revenues. Um, couple of comments for y'all, obviously looking at the budget calendar y'all approved, I think it was the first meeting in June. Um, trying to break up the workshops to kind of in bite sized pieces, so focus on the general funds and really departments and revenues. Um, next meeting will focus on payroll, uh, that whole payroll spreadsheet that we, uh, distribute with y'all. The next meeting on the thirteenth would be all the other funds that we have, um, including projects. Um, and try to really focus down on projects that we're looking at that should be underway next year and cash flow on those. And then finally, hopefully, somewhere out on the twentieth, we start kind of nailing things down based on y'all feedback. Um, we do have deadlines that we have to meet that are on there. Um, so really, that August eighth is a, is a, is a strong one of trying to accept the budget, being able to hit the advertisement dates. And finally, um, adopting that F Y twenty four budget on September five. So there's some critical dates when we start hitting September, August, September. Um, a couple of comments, number one, I just want to really thank Sissy and our comptroller. Uh, she has been working extremely hard updating our chart of accounts. I kind of commented that in my email to y'all last night, as you start to look at this, you'll see a lot of accounts with no history. Um, because they're new accounts that were created. Um, she's basically trying to put our chart of accounts in line with the recommendation of, um, Mississippi State Auditor's Office. It is an extremely slow and tedious project. Uh, my comptroller in Diamond Head did this, it, it takes a very long time. Um, so again, it's, it's not just a quick, easy fix, um, especially at the same time you're trying to build a new budget. Um, but again, just wanted to, when you're looking at that historical data, if you see zeros coming across, chances are it's a new account trying to, uh, follow a line. Or if you see another account that has history and all of a sudden has a drastically reduced number or a zero, it's probably been pushed to another, another, um, expense line item. Um, another thing to note, uh, going into this year, we were trying to really track expenses that deal with buildings. Um, and so A C repair, for example, it's not just under public works and under repairs. And we don't know what building it is, so things that can be tied to a fire department, city hall, council chambers, police station. Those were, uh, put to those departments. Um, so pest controls, utilities, things like that. Um, and then under building and grounds is a new department for all the other buildings, such as the community centers, senior center, boys and girls club, uh, things like that. So you'll see some bunch getting pulled out of really public works, cause where it's used to be, but it's really not streets and drainage. It's taking care of the senior center. So again, trying to really account for some things and make it easier and I guess more detailed for y'all, okay? Um, so if you start looking at revenues, just some big numbers, um, really no change, we're not recommending any change to the mill rates, no, you know, not up or down. Um, the tax collector has reported to us that, um, they expect a three percent increase in the mill value. And so right now, this year, we're at one seventy four, he's projecting we should be at one seventy nine. For, so for every mill we charge is a hundred seventy nine thousand dollars generated. Um, gaming tax, uh, there's a slight decrease in our budget. Um, nothing really to talk about, but there is just a tad down, just because of kind of where we're trending right now this year. And I think it was like fifty thousand, so again, nothing to, you know, give us heartburn over, but it's not flat.
And, and, uh, Mike, in terms of the, the mill valuation and then the property. I thought, I mean, I don't know, we're probably coming to that, but what do we, what can we expect? I'm sure those numbers will be coming out, but are we gonna be seeing, do we anticipate seeing an increase in terms of the value?
In our revenue?
No, no, just with.
The value of the home, uh.
The property, the property value's increasing, therefore the property taxes, which we encountered.
That's every.
We're not seeing that.
Four years type of thing.
Is it every four?
Every four, they're supposed to reassess legally.
Okay, so we're, you're gonna have to, when, when did that hit last year?
They just did that last year, but so are we looking at with the new builds? You know, what we've had.
Should see more revenue.
Sixty, seventy, a hundred new builds over the course of the year, we'll see more revenue.
Yeah, new builds.
And that type, yeah.
Right.
But, but values will not be going up.
No, values aren't going up.
Again, he said about a three percent increase.
Yeah.
On the valuation of the mill.
And I think last year wasn't just a four year thing, it was something to do with the ten year, ten year they got to redo.
They were unable to do some of that thing, it might have been five, you know, five years or so.
That's what it, that's what it was, yeah.
But, but usually too, they try not to hit the entire area at one time, it's, you know. I think COVID threw them out of whack there and all, but you know, like maybe doing north side or the south side or, you know, six oh three area to say, but it ended up being all in. But we still, so we, we are three years or so out programing a new evaluation.
But again, from your budget perspective, you'll see about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of new money from this year's budget to next year's budget under taxes. So it's kind of flat from a revenue stream, and we want to be conservative on that revenue side. Um, you know, so if, if all of a sudden we hit, you know, a couple extra hundred thousand, that, that's a good thing. If we're a couple hundred thousand shy, that's a bad thing. So I think it's better to just kind of be as conservative as possible on revenues. But that's what our tax collector has passed on to us. Um, the building permits, uh, we do see a bump in that, um, a slight increase. Again, that's looking at this year's actuals and kind of matching and looking at what next year's is expected to be. That's under permit dash building, uh, that we see a little bump. Sales tax, again, we did a slight increase there, um, just under a hundred grand. Uh, and again, that's where we're trending this year, so we feel pretty good about that. Most of the other revenue accounts, we just kind of really held flat, I mean, nothing really to talk about. Um, again, just taking a very conservative approach on revenues.
We, um, just on golf cart permits down there at the bottom, I would say we jumped up about twenty two thousand. Were you expecting that much of a jump?
Well, we still have three, I think last year was fifty.
So that was a question, yep.
Current budget year's forty eight. Year to date is forty six.
We have a pool with fifty eight, we have forty eight right now, still three months to go, there'll be some registrations, um. Yeah, that, that's one of the ones we got marked, uh, we'll sit down and discuss with Sissy on that, but.
I mean, it's just projected year end, right now it's forty seven, six fifty, and we got sixty nine, one fifty one is requested for new budget.
That's a big jump.
It's a big jump. For golf cart permits, that'll fifty dollars.
Yeah, I mean, that was one we emailed her yesterday and today, can we look at that line item? And again, based on where we are, and this is using May thirty one's numbers, cause June has not been completed yet.
And most of that money's made at one time though, when they gotta do it at September thirtieth or October first.
They usually come in, yeah, but with events and all, two people come register.
Can we get something online where they can register online and maybe print a temporary tag, anything on the golf cart, they can have it with them?
That and we're also looking at.
A lot more people would pay it then. I'm sorry.
Trying to send reminders and all that as well.
I think if we had something on the internet where they could pay it and print it out for a temporary weekend or a week past, you'd probably get a lot more people registered. Just cause when they come to town, we're already closed or something at City Hall, I mean, we need to get something a little more user friendly.
User, up to date.
Yeah, I want to say that. Something in twenty first century or something, you know, just to where. Even if they did it, and I don't know how you, someone could do it and probably mail it to them ahead of time, but.
One, one of the things we've talked about was couldn't we use our encode utility billing system to have an annual renewal, so that would go out. Um, to remind people that, hey, it's that time of year, kind of like we, we send out reminders for business permits, you know, privileged license type of thing. Uh, that's not being done through utilities, but it, it could be a way to use that billing site, billing system. So that's kind of it on revenues, I mean, again, the, the rest have kind of held pretty tight. Unless somebody's got an item on that. Um, going into expenses, just some general information, things that I call it carrying across all departments. Um, again, projecting a ten percent increase in health insurance, just says a conservative number. We've seen how, you know, we've actually had some favorability on that, um, over the years, but never know what's gonna come, so I always put a ten percent. Um, John has also indicated to us to be prepared, again, for property and casualty insurance, we budgeted a twenty percent increase there. Um, so you'll see those numbers across the different departments. Um, under payroll, when you start looking at, uh, that, that those line items, uh, we were going in requesting a five percent across the board. And then looking at public works in particular, um, based on our conversations, when we looked at H two O last year. Of trying to raise the salaries in that department to compete, I think we're shy or missing eight out of like, I forget the exact number right now, I have it in one of my notes. We're missing like eight people in public works right now. Um, so I know we had talked about that, so again, we'll get into more discussion with individuals, um, on that in our next meeting, but that's kind of carried throughout, uh, for the budget. When you see computer services, that is our I T contractor, that's Gmail accounts, and that's Google Storage. Uh, when you see software maintenance agreements, that is gonna be the software that's used to run the different departments, such as Granicus for city council. Uh, City Works, Public Works, Incode for accounting, sir?
Is that a new account?
These are some of the, I believe it's a new.
Something we split out from some of our.
So Granicus, Granicus and City Works mainly fall under that?
That, that would be up under the software maintenance agreements, yeah.
What page?
Incode. The revenue department, I mean, each department's gonna have possibly a different software.
What's the, the?
So if you're looking at page three, under city council, it's like the third to last line, software maintenance agreement.
Yeah, what about, um, and this is under?
Oh, I'm looking administration.
Yeah, this is under general, what's the, the zoning code update, a hundred thousand?
Yeah, I thought I was gonna get to that when I get to those departments, I'm, I'm bringing that out.
On the council?
So.
Yeah, everything there.
Mhm.
Uh, the other thing I was just gonna comment on, again, expenses for facilities, I already kind of commented on my opening statement with y'all. It's just that we're trying to tie the expenses to the department, so pest control, termites, electricity, water bill. If we can tie that building to a department and, and, and track that expense, so we know how much are we spending on termites? How much are we spending on elevator repair or elevator contracts? That, that'll all be there for y'all. Does that make sense for just some general across the boards?
Yes.
That make, okay? So looking at, uh, the city council department, page three. We didn't have any changes to any of our elected official salaries. Um, but again, and, and we talked briefly about that, I would recommend the council, if you want, we can do a rate study across the board, start looking at that. And over these next twenty, twenty twenty three sometime, if y'all want to take action so that you can set the salary for the next elected officials. Um, now would probably, this year would probably be the time to do that, but it wouldn't take effect until the next elected group takes office, if y'all decide to do something.
If we consider that, just looking at some comparisons, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would give you a rate, and that's what I did in Diamond Head, it said every city across the coast.
See that.
What's the mayor's making, what's this person, blah, 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 you know?
And look at that, look at the last time.
And what benefits they get too.
Benefits and what was the last time they maybe gave a raise here in this city, you know? I don't know, but.
Now, I just wanted to note that for y'all, but.
Been a while.
Um, otherwise, the only staff person changed, again, no staffing changes in there, except we have our one person, which is Ms. Caitlin. Um, in that department, so we're not adding staff, taking away staff. Um, big things under there, and talking to Orion Planning, we expect to have about thirty thousand for the comprehensive plan billed in the next fiscal year. The rest of it would be billed this fiscal year. Um, I, we added a zoning code update, so again, talking to Orion, asking them, hey, what, what, what's an estimate? Um, and they haven't fully digested our zoning code, but he said, you know, Mike, if you budget a hundred thousand, you're probably somewhere in the ballpark. I said, all right, we're, that's our next step, you know, to, so putting that.
How much of that, how much in that, I mean, that was part of them coming in and helping with some zoning ordinances, I thought, on that original agreement we had with Orion, correct?
No, Orion Planning is strictly a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but they were supposed to modify any ordinances that they're getting, that, that, when my discuss, when we had discussions with them.
No.
I was sitting right in the room, Mike, when they said, we will, we will modify ordinances to make sure.
They will make recommendations, but they're not recom, they're not modifying ordinances.
Have they made, that's what, have they making recommendations based on some of those ordinances?
They're gonna have, they're, on the back of the comprehensive plan, there'll be items for implementation. One of those that you can expect would be update your zoning code ordinance, create a master plan for recreation.
All they're gonna say is update, they're not gonna give any other dat, any other, you need specifics.
I think they would probably, you're gonna probably see some specifics, that's Friday morning, Jeremy and I met with him and talked about that and just said, you know. Cause one of our concerns is, all right, highway ninety is a, is a big part of the comprehensive plan. And I said, well, if we're six months away from finishing the comprehensive plan, what happens if somebody comes in tomorrow and wants to put something up? How do we kind of prevent that, that's working against our comprehensive plan where we're headed? If this, you know, and so those were some of the things that we said, can you give us some recommendations maybe of things the council can take action on to, to kind of put us in the right field and not put us behind the eight ball a little bit?
I just, I interpret that as part of their fee, is that they will come in and, and.
They're not writ, they're not rewriting your zoning code.
Not, not the whole code, but if there's anything like you had just mentioned where it doesn't jive with the comprehensive plan goal, and there needs to be a change or tweak to the ordinance, that they will, with that process.
Yeah, I mean, it might be, you know, hey, you wanna look at this, but I just want to make sure that's clear.
You know, like some of the recommendations might be more multi-use residential and commercial buildings, stuff like that.
Update, update your signing ordinance for highway ninety.
Yeah.
You know? And looking at that, like, you know, make up something, Diamond Head right now has a, some neon cranium sign inside the windows. I mean, it's, it's horrible, I took a picture of it, sent it to the city manager, I was like, is that really, within the sign ordinance? He's like, our sign ordinance silent, is silence for window signs, he goes, but we're looking for a text amendment. So those types of things, yeah.
Okay.
Um, redistricting, um, just depending on where that, the cost of the thirty three thousand, we have that in the budget. If some of that may be spent this fiscal year, so, you know, but just depending on what really the timing is for, for that expense, so put it in there just to have it. Um, software agreements, just to mention, uh, Caitlin and I, um, Granicus is just renewing, I think, June one, if I'm not mistaken, renewed. That's about twelve thousand a year, um, for the software, for the minutes agendas, and the streaming. Um, we went and we looked at what, um, Diamond Head and the county is using, which is Munich Code, which is where we have our ordinances. It's about half the price, um, and actually, to me, a little bit more user friendly, so it may be something next summer, when we get into next year, that we want to look at. For the first year, it'd be about the same, because of just implementing and moving minutes and everything over. After that, it cuts it in half, so instead of twelve thousand a year, you'd be about six thousand a year. So again, I just wanted to bring that up, but it'll come up next year, but.
The county don't use Granicus no more?
No, they got away from it. They were having issues, the same, the same service.
They sell that on it.
Yeah, we've been in meetings and the, you know, the thing's not working at five o'clock, and we're going live at five thirty, and she's begging for somebody to call her back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So again, just something really kind of, from next year's budget, it's kind of a wash, it's the same numbers. But if you implement it the following year, once you add a contract with Granicus, you know, it's something maybe next spring to start looking at, you know, type of deal. They say they want to upsell you.
So Munich Code, essentially, it'll be almost half, now, that's not including some of the upstart.
It would go from twelve to six.
But some of the upstart charges that they get you on.
The first year you have, cause you gotta ca, you gotta migrate all that, all those minutes agendas over to the new software. So you've, you've got an upfront cost.
But it'll be similar.
Am I saying that pretty right? Yes.
What do you mean website, like what is it, do you?
Oh, not website, but the, the live streaming piece.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? You can, that's a different, a different, yeah, yeah, it's all the same. But the website's a different module, different software. I don't want, sure, using the right language. For, so that's kind of it for city council, unless y'all have any questions on that.
Not so much on city council, but just some thoughts in general.
Okay.
When we get to building department and stuff, well, I know Mr. Tommy's retiring this week, I hate that, but also. Um, I think we need to look at budgeting cell phones for some of them employees, city cell phones. Cause I've gotten texts and group texts with some of the city employees, and I tell them, look, hey, I'm elected, you can text me anytime, but kind of respect their, their time off work, you know? On this Sundays and eight o'clock at night, I mean, and they happen to get their employees' personal cellphone.
And they will call at all locations?
Oh, they will, and I, I. I think code enforcement, building department, a few of them probably need to have city cell phones that, that they can leave. We still got their personal number for needing them to come back in for an emergency, but general public isn't having their personal cellphone number. And also, like, we had, since I've been here, three, we're not their code enforcement guy, it'd be nice if the same number could be out there for the code enforcement department as a, a cell number.
Yeah.
No matter who was in the position, the phone number belongs to the city and to that, that department would be a thought.
And I don't, I don't disagree, and I think now that, I agree with that, I, you know, and I, I just got one up a few days ago, it's the city employees, six A M. in the morning, and they're hourly. And I've always said, okay, if you, you know, when, when you're hourly and you're taking those calls or those texts, technically you're on the clock, and so, you know. So, I mean, I know that cellphone wouldn't negate that part of it, but, I mean, it does become an issue if it's a personal phone that you're being given out to outside of the council.
And just to give you, with our new contract with A T and T on that FirstNet, it's about forty dollars a month for a phone, I mean, or a little bit less, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I, I recommend we look at getting them some.
And they give you, they give us the phone, the phone's free, it's an iPhone of some, or you've got a choice of whatever phone it is.
We definitely look at that, cause I mean.
But that's your cost, just to give you an idea of.
Yeah, it's not.
We can look at that and have a discussion on it.
Yeah, I just.
Cause we've actually had, I mean, internally, we've had this discussion.
Memorial Day, I got this group text with code enforcement, and then one night at seven thirty at night, I got a group text, and finally, you know, I'm like, it's.
Credit to Billy, he answers them.
Yeah, he did. Well, so, but, and he said.
He gets up early too, but.
And the only number he's got to really give is his personal number, because he's not in the office all day, he's actually out looking for stuff and working, so that's the only contact with them, so, okay.
Um, just moving on to court, which will be page five. Again, staffing, there's no changes there, we've got three employees, um, in that department. Um, kind of a supervisor plus two clerks, but no changes there. Uh, we have legal services under that department, thirty five thousand, that's our private prosecutor and public defender. Uh, I would like over the next few months for us to look at those two contracts, um, and just update them to make sure we have current contracts in place for those two professionals. Uh, but again, no changes on budgeting.
Are those your service agreements?
Those basically professional service agreements with the, uh, li, lawyers. And then just to note, prisoner fees, uh, that's sixty three thousand dollars we pay to house prisoners, uh, no change there as well. That's kind of one of the bigger ticker i- items in that department, and that's kind of it for court.
Why is our, just question, why is our year to date so low right now? Prisoner fees, is that just?
I don't know if we, if we, if we caught up with our bills, sometimes they'll run a couple months behind, we'll find out.
I mean, if it's, you know, if we only have three months left, and we had twenty six thousand, we're budgeting sixty four grand, it's, we, we're doing pretty good right now.
But by the dock of their two back, I remember paying like three or four months worth, that was in the rears.
Yeah, so yeah, it's probably back behind.
We need to see where we at on that.
If I look back the other years, fifty one thousand, sixty seven thousand, and we budgeted sixty three.
Yeah. Right, I'm not saying it's, I'm just saying it, what we're looking at, if, if these numbers are up to date, it is out of whack, but if it's not up to date, then that's, makes sense.
Thank you. Uh, administration, page six, again, staffing, no changes, we have six point five employees, that's six full time, one half time. Um, that's excluding the mayor elected, uh, position. Um, audit fees, we budget at forty four thousand, that, um, talked to Caitlin about the F Y twenty two bud, um, audit, which is about to be completed. Is our last on the current contract with Wright Ward Hatton Gilf, um, so I asked her to put a ticker, so that we can advertise for R F Ps for audit services. Uh, coming up when, in July, end of July or something. The idea that we could have that hopefully in place before the end of September, so when we roll, finish F Y twenty three, we're kind of ready, already have the auditor in, in place. And we can start building a calendar of when they're gonna get to work, okay, so we're not gonna get behind. Uh, general insurance, there's a big one here for six hundred thirteen thousand, that's the twenty percent increase, you can see it jump from like five thirty three. I'm sorry, five oh eight to six thirteen, I mean, it's a big jump, twenty percent. Um, promotional services. Um, we put some funds in there to basically try to look at, at events, activities at the train depot to try and promote that area. Um, again, this would come back to the council, but looking for, what can we do for Christmas down there, for example? Uh, Christmas lights, that kind of thing, can we move the Christmas tree lighting to that area? Can we, uh, do other events that would drive more traffic down there and use, you know, the facility that we built? Um, capital expense, again, we put some funds, twenty five thousand, looking for Christmas decorations. Uh, if you went to M M L, there was, I'm gonna use a, one example, there was a big Christmas tree there.
Bunch of big stuff.
About sixteen feet tall, you can build it, buy it in four foot sections, it's like eleven thousand dollars, uh.
The mayor of Hattiesburg told a funny story at lunch about that, I don't know if y'all heard that one.
I didn't hear it, no.
Wednesday lunch, but he said, he put one in a roundabout, they, they were proud of their new roundabout or whatever, and he put one in the center of a roundabout.
Somebody drive through it?
And he said somebody like Christmas vacation, hit, hit something and went in the air and like, just took it out, completely took it out, two days after they put it.
Got no insurance.
No, he said, no, exactly, he said the driver was fine, but they didn't have insurance, so.
But looking, I mean, just trying to look at that area, Train Depot is a way to really create a Christmas act, a location, I guess, something, something special, something different.
Eventually, it'd be nice to take that, tie all the way into downtown, have a walking trail, you know, cause we're still looking down, I think, way back, you know, we talked about that. The walking trail going through, along the railroad, we're still looking at that, trying to connect the two areas, so it would be something that we could continue to grow on. And, and probably the closest one to us, I think it's Columbia, Columbia's right out of Hattiesburg, is that Columbia?
Columbia.
Columbia.
Their downtown area was dead. If, if you go back and look, and we talked with the guy, and they revitalized it because of this, and they, yeah, it's unbelievable, the people that go there. For their light shows and everything, and it's huge.
And you would think, the amount of money they spent is nowhere near what I thought it would be, you know, but I'm sure it's more now than what it was, but. It, it's something, you know, I think that would, would take and, you know, close the gap between winter time and springtime for events. And, and help a lot of our retail places and businesses throughout to make it to where we're, you know, doing business year round, not just in those seven, eight, nine months and all. And, and you know, the few things we do, you know, like the New Year's Eve party, I mean, that's, it's unbelievable what it attracts down there for that weekend, or, you know, them few nights and all, and different things like that. So, uh, we do believe it could be very vital to the area, you know, um, to help those, especially as the depot continues to grow. With the businesses coming in, so it's just something we want to start looking at, and we're gonna try to get somebody to come in, this is, you know, them coming in, come up with design, plan, and, and, you know, and work on it from year to year to steadily increase it and all, you know?
Like, the one in Jones Park, does the city do that, or does a private company does that and get the money?
City, and they, and they take in, kind of had them figures.
I go to it every year, the kids love it.
It's well over a hundred thousand.
If we could do like a depot, just depot way, where you drive through and there's a, you know, not a, not a grand light show, but there's.
Just things to see.
Lights on every side.
They take in well over a hundred thousand. I forgot that number. It's unbelievable what they take in at Jones Park.
Yeah, I guess some of the vendors there may be private people, like hot chocolate vendors and popcorn and all that.
Yeah. But, but, but all your fees and all, but again, they, I'm sure they got, a department does nothing but take care of that stuff. But, but, but all your fees and all, but again, they, I'm sure they got, a department does nothing but take care of that stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but if you look at, if you look it up, look up Columbia at their holidays and all.
Okay.
It, it's, it's huge, and, and that was a downtown that was, was dead. I mean, nothing, and this revitalized the entire area.
We're gonna spend a million dollars we got for the parking garage to do something with it, do you know?
Working on that now, we're looking at.
Jason had, uh, an architect out there yesterday morning with him.
January, February, March, we've blocked, we've blocked off three months.
Okay.
To where there's no, no rent, no anything, so it's gonna be within, start within the end of the year.
We looked at our calendar and looking at the rental hall calendar.
Yeah.
Yes.
And basically, there was a, there was a spot, and it was like a three-month gap, and we just went and blocked it, and said, don't rent anything in there, that's our construction time.
Okay.
Uh, for what we're doing, so Jason knows those, that's our timeline.
Okay.
So we have to be working backwards on, okay, when are we advertising, bidding, accepting bids, giving notice to proceed, so that.
Just paint, no.
Right after Christmas, they're, you know, moving in.
I think it might be the worst time to try to paint it though.
Inside?
Weather-wise, no, the outside.
Oh, yeah.
All them steps and runners and stuff.
Well, we're looking at new steps, aluminum steps, still have the boards in it and everything, we're looking at, uh, the anti-aluminum, where everything will be aluminum, still have the wood sta- steps that you're walking up and down, so it's not so loud. Taking a bunch of that other stuff out, completely redoing it, taking like, I guess it's that catwalk that's over the parking area?
Mm-hmm.
Where there's just nothing, just leaves up top, taking all that out, put the steps right there, coming down for access, that give you the two accesses, front, back, side, whatever you wanna call that area there, so we're looking at taking some things out, and, you know, they, they serve no purposes, except for looks maybe, and, but the upkeep on that is unbelievable.
But the upkeep is huge.
Yeah.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be going, that building, I don't know how old it is, ten years old, maybe something like that, twelve years old? Maybe two thousand ten or somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yeah.
But it's been like this, deteriorating, for a long time, this, you know, it just didn't happen, it's, it's just not held up.
For a while, it's been like this for four, five, six years. Something, you know.
Yeah.
So, but we always looking at that, and we hope to be started, at least have it out for bids, ready to start first of the year. I, I think it's January, February, March, I don't, I don't think it's December, but I think, cause I think we got events for December.
Okay. Okay.
But I think that's the three months we're looking at to do the repairs on it.
And woods nice, but woods maintenance, if you could do some concrete steps or something.
Well, we're, we're looking, again, aluminum should be good.
Yeah.
That's what some of the stuff they got on the hall, we're gonna do the, the, the deck for the flo- um, steps going up, but for the deck upstairs, we're looking at replacing that, and that's why he's got some other people looking at, and pouring concrete in there.
Yeah.
That way we get away with all them boards there popping up and all that type thing, so it, you know, it'd be a type of a concrete up there, that will be for all the way around the building, you know, up there and on.
Okay.
Now, the big thick boards, uh, that, that other wood, it will stay over there where it's at. We don't have a problem with that, it's just that regular, you know, decking board, whatever they end up with there.
Teak board or that one, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Sorry.
So that was my notes on administration, if y'all had any other questions on that area.
So we're looking at another, uh, twenty-five thousand maintenance on that too, what, what's in, what's included in that one? Under administration, page seven.
I'm sorry, page seven.
Software maintenance agreement.
Oh.
We just had that in another budget, in another line item last year, is that what?
Is that the capital you're looking at?
It's under contractual services, under administration.
That, that's gonna be stuff like InCode, again, I've asked her to break off our contracts.
Right, so that's always, that's just, been all broken out from.
So that was on different.
So yeah, so the city council's gonna have Granicus.
Right.
Yeah, but it's a different line item, that's why it's shown, we didn't have anything on it.
InCode, yeah.
Right, nothing, nothing from previous years, cause it's, it's all being broken out.
If you look in accounting. So when you look at the account number, zero, zero, one, that is your general fund number.
Mm-hmm.
The one twenty is your department number. Then you go to six thirty-five, that's actually the expense account number, so there'll be six thirty-five in all departments. So we can look at and see it collectively, as a whole, as an entity, but we can go down and nail it down to the department as well.
Gotcha.
So, you know, Granicus would be charged to, obviously, the department for city council, InCode is more of an accounting software for administration. City Works is gonna be for Public Works only, does that make sense?
Yeah, it'd just be a lot more detailed, that way.
What's, uh, on the legal, the legal services is down, but then the retainer is up, am I reading that right, so the retainer?
No, retainer is, is.
Same retainer.
Same retainer, the same amount, I think we had budgeted last year.
That one twenty-six is the same?
That's the retainer.
One twenty-six is the retainer, and then we had one thirty-three budgeted last year, so that ten is just kind of, if there's other general stuff that, outside of the retainer.
Outside of what the retainer.
With the same amounts, basically.
And then that general insurance, you, you projected about a twenty percent?
Yeah, I mean, we got an email from John that basically said, it's, it's, be ready for pain.
I thought we budgeted.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kinda, we said twenty percent.
And we took, we took a big hit last year, hurtin' something.
Cool, we took a big one, but not as big as in other places, I mean, that's what John was saying, but.
I forgot what Wayland's was.
He's saying his, his lifetime being in the insurance market, he's never seen it like this, I mean, it's just, so I'm, all we can do is try to prepare for it, and budget for it.
Does it have to go to the insurance commissioner to get approval for rate increases on some of them, or no, they just approve them?
You should go through them, I would think.
Because, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna see a lot of foreclosure's coming soon, just from the insurance rates going up into, all over the United States, but, I mean, it's, it's not just here, but, you can see a lot.
I don't know. Yeah.
It's worse here probably than anywhere else, you know, um.
We, I feel we taking a big hit here.
We are.
I don't, I don't, I think it's probably across the country, and I don't think it's just here.
No.
I mean, just because of tornadoes, to fires, to earthquakes, to you name the disaster, that's traveled, you know, wherever you go. And I also believe that, no, I'm not a specialist on property insurance, but I really think it's an international market, it's not just the United States even, and not just a segment of the United States.
And the cost of building is so high right now, and materials are so high, I mean, just replacement costs are so much different than it was a couple of years ago.
Yeah. Alright, the next one, page eight, is elections, that's again, a new department she created, obviously you see zero dollars budget, cause we don't anticipate having an election next year.
Okay.
Unless somebody wants to say something that we need to prepare for.
We do.
We're looking about the three percent thing.
We do plan on, on trying to push that through again, for the, uh.
Three percent lodging.
Yes, but even if it is, it would be approved in July.
Okay.
Not sure realistically if we could even get it in this budget.
We wouldn't get it in.
You know, it, it would take, you know, the advertisements and everything, but we all looking at trying to put that forward and all, and been talking to some of the representatives, senators and all, already on that, so we should, I think we're gonna be alright on that.
That's one of the things also coming out of the comprehensive plan with Orion, is, is, if y'all.
I think he figured we were probably looking at about.
They were there for that.
I was just thinking.
Four hundred thousand, I think he said.
What that could generate, and you've gotta be able to put it towards like projects or things such as tourism or recreation, really project-driven, or, you know, those two areas. So, through the comprehensive plan, you're starting to see more of that recreation piece come out, um, trails, multi-lower lanes, athletic fields, pickleball, uh, or things like Christmas decorations or other tourism type of stuff. Um, but what can come off of those types of, that revenue stream, you're talking about the local private bill, uh, they inquired about, you know, the three, two, three, two, three percent on lodging, kinda thing.
Moving forward with that.
Kyle had brought it up originally.
So, if you're looking at timing, that goes back to the legislature, really March, April is kind of the local private kinda time, maybe more, you know, type of deal.
No, yeah, whatever you gotta do.
Then you have to have an election on it, and then, so you, by the time you're implementing it, if it was approved, you're in FY twenty-five.
It's almost. I was gonna say, you almost put it on the ballot when we run for reelection in twenty-five, gonna be the same timeframe, just about, almost within the special election, but just have it on there.
Figure about those, I mean, you travel just like I do for, for sports, you go anywhere, you're paying it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So it's there.
So we need to jump on that.
So we oughta be.
Mar- March, and then it's gotta get through the whole process of the legislation and then.
Yeah.
Really, in the late fall, y'all should pass, if you, if the council wants to take action on something like that, you need an unanimous resolution of support, uh, in the fall, that, and then probably start talking to the local private chair to let them know, hey, this is what's coming, and that way it's in committee in January, February, and then hopefully making it to a vote in March, whenever local privates are, are dealt with.
I'm not sure the timeline, but I know it gets signed in, in July. So possibly we could, it could be a fall vote, you know, if we're going to put it out. Something, we can work on, or do you wait another, another election?
Maybe if it's.
May of, of a year after, it's eighteen months away.
What's the, I mean, I guess we just have to look at what the, what the cost is to do a special election on that, if, depending on everything.
It looks like it's probably, and, and, can we simplify that, instead of having polls everywhere, maybe set up two polls, you know?
Twenty-five hundred.
I don't know, Wayland's got one poll, but that's all they ever have, and I don't know if we can do that or not, but we're probably looking about, I think that we, it was thirty thousand? What is that number? Thirty-three thousand in twenty-twenty-one, so that would've been our election. So it's probably looking at that amount. But again, you know, we've started talking to, to legislatures, try, and, you know, I think they're gonna be alright this year, get on board, and we're gonna give them something come this springtime there, and, and make sure they got it and everything, start pushing that.
Think we need it.
Yeah.
Oh, I think he threw out numbers, just, just a two percent, I'm not sure if he threw out two percent, three percent on lodging, was somewhere around four, four hundred fifty thousand dollars. If you included meals in it, you're looking at probably about one point two, one point five million dollars. And, and, and the thing, you know, with that is, and I don't know if you can do it for just meals, say in the downtown area, that'd be something to think about, if where tourists, mostly tourists or not and everything. But I think last time when we figured in, you know, it was sixty, probably sixty to seventy percent of restaurants is fed on tourists, you know, so.
We, we would just have to be certain, I mean, again, it's two different, it, the, the hosting fee wouldn't affect locals, there's no, no financial burden, the food and beverage does potentially, so.
It would, it would have some.
We'd have to, there'd be a lot of education on that, because you don't want, wanna think it's tied to the other, think, no, I don't want, you know.
I would think that with anything, education's the number one thing, like, why are you doing this? You know, and I think that's why your comprehensive plan, which leads into possibly a, a master plan for recreation or some vision with your recreation side, such as pickleball, or ath- new athletic fields, or, you know, improved, what are you doing with it? And if you have a plan that you're gonna execute, that's, I think, an easier, I'm gonna call it a sell, to the general public. If you're just saying we're taxing you, I think you're gonna get hanged. But I think we're, you, you guys are in a role, I think, with a, a nice vision of where you're trying to go, and what you're trying to do.
Have a layout and everything.
You've gotta be able to lay that out, and I think that, that's something that can be achieved.
Yeah, need a detailed plan going forward, last time we wasn't detailed enough.
No.
We knew what we wanted to do, but we didn't implement, we didn't give the vision to the public enough.
And you might even decide to bite-size it, you might say, you know, just go lodging to start, and if you start saying, hey, this is working and we're implementing things, you know, so I mean, again, y'all had time for the discussion on that, how y'all wanna do that.
Is the, so the lodging obviously is earmarked just for tourism, parks and wrecks, what is it, is, is food and beverage, is that the same?
I think it's the same type of thing, yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah.
And I think this, you would need to really, try to figure out something for VRBOs still, is it a registration, at least a registration process or something?
Well, that's true.
Cause that's a business that's making a lot of money for the people.
Brought it up the other night too, there's a lot of places charge like two hundred dollars, he showed the revenue on that.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, we.
You know, you're looking at five hundred of them times two hundred dollars, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
And it's something that you can use for enforcement, you can regulate them to, you know, like, like Coach Triflin, they was talking about, they sleeping in the garage and all out there. You know, you can stop some of that stuff from going on, hey, this is how many people you can have there and all.
We need to, cause I'm gonna tell you, the last six months, I've had more complaints on VRBOs with parking issues and other things, and I called the police, but the police don't have time just to be parking police all weekend, with people parking three cars in the street.
It, it's everywhere.
No, but again, I'd go back and.
So it's really becoming, it's starting to become a nuisance to the neighborhood sometimes.
I, I think the number one, of all the people who were attending the comprehensive plan meetings, over the last week mostly, most of them were there because of VRBOs.
Yeah, mm-hmm, I mean, it's really.
And they were, they were, that was a major concern for residents.
It's starting to become affecting the neighbors, the neighborhood.
That you're seeing, but, again, if you just.
Parking is it, it's not, it's not, being a VRBO, it's, it's them trying to cram ten, fifteen people
Twelve fat people in there.
Right.
In this little bitty place, and, and creating parking.
That's exactly.
And we can't say, well.
Should hold six, and they put.
I might have a party at my house, I don't have a party every weekend at my house.
Bring in two or three families instead of one family.
But the surveys that they were getting, I mean, that was stuff rising to the top of concerns of residents, and so that's why, you know, for Orion, they were saying, hey, you
I've been getting a lot of complaints.
Probably wanna have some type of minimum, at least minimum regulations in place, and possibly that fee thing, so if you did that, like, a hundred thousand dollars generated, well, alright, well, maybe that could be used to dedicate a police officer to our downtown area that's gonna look at parking, or a public works person to look at, um, litter control and trash, that kinda thing. I mean, those are things that y'all can talk about, and so, you know, as, if you wanna charge a fee, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do with it?
Then for one, make more money.
To me, that improves the life, the quality of life for all of our residents.
And it's not about money, but implement our own local park and parking ordinance with our own local parking tickets, where we don't send the money to the state, and we'll go out and these people are parked in the roads, ticket them, and let them pay us the fine, I mean, cause we got to do something, if we just don't do anything, it's just gonna keep continuing, there's gotta be some kind of.
It's gonna get worse.
Oh, it, it's already getting worse, that's what I'm saying, I've sat up here for years now, and the last six months, they've been the worst calls I've gotten over VRBOs.
I see it, and, 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 the bigger we let them build them, the more it is, and there's no yard for them to park in, the driveway's built for two, you know, it, and, and you're gonna see it more and more parking in the streets and.
May- maybe the, you know, it needs to be, if you've got enough parking spots for two, that's all the cars you're allowed to have at that thing, you know, I mean, at that location.
And they always bring.
If y'all wanted to look at a permitting fee for VRBOs like that, it generated a hundred grand, what do y'all feel that should be spent on, how do, you know, what would be the biggest impact for our residents?
Parking.
Police.
Yeah, police and then parking.
Downtown?
Not just downtown, all over.
Downtown, Ward Six.
Yeah.
Ward Six, it's Ward Five, it's anywhere along the river.
You know, there's a lot of VRBOs on that waterfront, probably the.
They parking trailers in the streets, and that boat trailer's in the street.
Well, a lot of them are either dead end or turnaround.
Almost all of them dead end on that water.
And you got somebody trying to pull a boat and a trailer, and, you know, jet skis in a trailer, and a golf cart on a trailer.
And it may be somebody that you put in the police department that works weekends a lot to where, cause that's when most of your violations are gonna occur, is gonna be the weekend, so we need to have maybe two officers that rotate weekends, that can go out there and do parking tickets, I'm sorry.
Code ordinance too. Code ordinance too.
Yeah.
On weekends.
Exactly, you know, so if we can have some, some mix of that code enforcement, although it'll still be deputized, or can be a police to give citations and stuff, I think might be a win.
You know, and I'd like, also like to see too, Mike, is some, some cleanup.
When you say cleanup?
Litter cleanup, or just, you know.
What we're looking at downtown.
So not blinded property, litter.
Not, right, just beautification, I mean, these people go.
What we're looking at downtown, they've been doing.
Go to and from the boat launches, and they ship, excuse, some boats out of their boat.
Yeah. More and more, but, we're looking at.
Gets all over the place in the ditches and.
Unloading zones along the beach, from railroad tracks to the motlers and from wherever our ordinance says, I think it's to ten o'clock in the morning, where the big trucks can get off the side road, cause we do, we got, we got a situation with schools and this and that when they're in, it, it's a cluster. It really is, you know, you get two big trucks parked, and you're swerving to get in between them and all, so we're looking at creating this there, and down Main Street a little way, to where we'll go in, I think we'll paint the T on the parking spots yellow, but it'll be this whole two-block area, block down Main, whatever, no parking between, whatever it is, six to ten, ten-thirty in the morning, unloading zones only.
I think we need to go a step further, and we was in a group text the other day, if not parking me this, we need to put two or three-hour parking all along the beach road maybe, cause the employees are the worst ones. They parking in front of businesses, I understand that, but then the customers have no place to park, and the people are mad, but they taking their own parking spots.
What this is gonna do too, by doing this, creating the no parking.
Well, if you do a three-hour parking, the employee can't park there for nine hours while they're working all day long.
But this, this allow for, for the trucks to unload, it'll also allow for the sweeper to go through there and clean the streets up and everything, but it's also gonna, it's gonna stop overnight parking along through there, and force them to go where they need to go.
Hotel gas.
So, it's, it's gonna really, it's gonna help, not just with unloading the big trucks and everything, it's gonna help on all that, and also in front of hotel there, you know, Monty and him sent recommendation to paint that curb red for fire lane, cause that's where you plug into, right there on side that building on Main Street. So when we get that implemented as well, then that's gonna stop anything from parking on that side road, and officers go by, you know, just gives them some. Same thing on the beach and everything, you know, down in these spots and all, so, I think it's gonna be good, you know, there's a lot of talk on the three-hour parking, two-hour parking, whatever you see it, you know, in different places and all, um. Same thing on the beach and everything, you know, down in these spots and all, so, I think it's gonna be good, you know, there's a lot of talk on the three hour parking, two hour parking, whatever you see it, you know, in different places and all, um.
Even if it puts the employees down to the harbor parking lot, not the garage, but off of the beach road.
Yeah.
Because you can ride downtown, there's not a parking spot nowhere around on the beach road and the parking garage is completely empty.
All the time.
Well, all, I know, I know the city of Gulfport, I think most there are free spots, even around the aquarium, it's all two hour parking, but again, that comes to, yes, about the funding, the fun, yeah, the funding that would come from, yeah. I mean, cause that's gonna be somebody stripping tires throughout the entire day, so, and I don't, you know, and I think, yeah, um, we got into, yes, you got some of the establishments that their employees might be parking, I think you're getting to an issue where they're parking in front of the neck, their, their neighbor's.
Yeah.
Business, to where, you know, yeah, I'm not parking in front of ours, but they're in parks in front of that and it's just a trickle effect, they do that feature too, so.
Yep, yep, I mean, so, that's.
But Alvin, Alvin has been putting together with the, the police department and all, putting together on the, the loading and unloading and some ideas, but then that's where this all came up.
And it might be that we need to look at, another position or two in the police department this year that can be down there doing some of this stuff, because we're getting busier, we're growing, which is great, but we gotta learn how to control it, I mean.
And part of that enforcement, having somebody that's really.
And when we get to the police, you'll see, I mean, we're basically full, I think we have one, all positions are filled, one of the full times has a part-time person in it. And we just had an officer who's full-time go, uh, for military duty for just over a year, so we gotta hold that spot for him, um, and pay benefits, not salary. Um, as I understand it, but, so, but they've, they've done a good job recruiting, so the things that y'all have done with salaries and longevity pay, I think leadership and new police station, I mean, it's been very positive, and so they filled a lot of vacancies, which is good, you know, I mean, if you wanna look at it, that's up to y'all.
Yeah, and if we can get, again, I mean, I think getting to an enforcement standpoint, having somebody that's dedicated to those, those areas, especially downtown, I mean, you could, you got people crossing, across traffic, crossing the lane illegally, you've got the golf carts, I mean, it's, there's a lot there, hiding on top of.
We got side by side or four wheeler down there that can move around.
Parking motorbikes on the sidewalks all the time, between Court Street and Cuz's, you know, I mean, just all kinda stuff that.
Yeah.
Needs to be addressed.
Yep.
Alright, next department's gonna be permitting, our building department, that's page nine, um, again, staffing there, there's no recommended changes when it comes to employees, uh, there's six total employees, that's, uh, from the building official, building inspector, two clerks and a planning person.
I have a question, it came up about, um, we, we have.
End code.
Mister Tommy that's gonna be retiring very near future, I know right now it's booming, we got a backlog, three to four weeks, no fault to, to theirs, but it's just busy. Um, is there somebody we have planned going into that or gonna be taking that role to where we don't continue to log jam that permitting process or what?
We do, we're looking at, uh, inside moving up, you know, hiring another one to replace, um, and we even looked at in, uh, to, they print, they, they caught up a lot.
Yeah.
You know, they, they've been working some overtime and all, trying to catch up and everything, and so they, they caught up pretty good on that. But we're also looking at trying to find someone that may be able to come in to review plans.
Okay.
You know, to take some of that off of them where they're doing more of the inspecting now, so we're looking at that, just trying to find the right person that may be able to do that.
Can we look at a salary ordinance comparison for that too, and see what the other goes? That's what we need to look at, cause I think we need to address that during this budget, if we putting somebody else in that position.
Again, you know, talking and everything, you know.
But you just gotta pay for decent people.
My feeling is the sky's the limit, but he's also gotta take and get certain certification. I don't think, I might be wrong, but I don't even know if there's a, a certified building inspector in the state of Mississippi anymore.
Building official, yeah.
Building official. You know, it's just not happening, it's a, it's an eight, ten hour test that nobody can pass, you know, it's very hard, but still, that, you know, the other certification that goes along, to get to that step, need to move forward into getting those as well, you know, so, so that, you know, again, we'll probably, you know, Tuesday night announce that and everything and that.
I think that needs to come along with steps also, as they get certifications, it needs to be rewarded.
Yep.
And, and again, it is.
I think that's a wise decision.
I think you have to do that, because even where Tommy was.
If not, you're gonna, if not, you're gonna spend your money, train them, they're gonna leave.
They're gonna leave, right.
So you might, you gotta, you gotta pay them to stay once you train them.
Even where Tommy was at, I think he probably, I don't know, he might have been the lowest.
Without a doubt.
We got to bargain for a long time, I think. So.
But one thing, on the, the, those positions, you don't find them on every corner.
No.
They're not accountants, they're not lawyers. Yep, you know, they're not bankers, they're, they're a, a certain breed, you know, it's hard to come by.
And when you. Well, you know, as much as they do, you can go out in the private sector and build a couple spec houses a year and make a whole lot more money and not have half the headache, I mean, you know, there's lots of other opportunities for them.
My conversations with them this week was, while you're out there doing inspections, be looking for somebody who's on that roof swinging that hammer, that A is a good communicator, you know, that can represent the city well, but the opportunity, if they're making twenty bucks an hour out there, working eight hours, nine hours in the heat, can, you know, we have an opportunity to bring them on, give them benefits, for about the same pay, you know, so. Maybe there's somebody out there that we can find that we can train, that has some background, it's been basically on a construction site for years.
Hire a personality, train the skill.
Yeah.
You can train, you can train the right personality.
But you really need to, the right personality, you know, is important. Um, continuing on there, we do have, uh, ten thousand dollars for engineering services, uh, that's up a little bit, that is for reviewing plans, so when a commercial uh, business comes in town and we need to have them look at the drainage, or subdivision comes in town, a lot of, a lot of the review is done internally for basic subdivision stuff, but when it comes to the drainage and they start submitting drainage calculations, we've gotta have somebody trained to be able to make sure those numbers are right and they're not fudging them. Um, so that's what that's available for, that's billed based on Jason's contract with us, um, what is it, hourly rates. We have tw- five, five thousand dollars in there for training, for certifications, things that we just talked about, uh, software maintenance agreement, um, looking at next year, looking at some time to try to move to possibly a Muni code or some other software, uh, that is more, I'm gonna call it user friendly, more like a City Works, where you, you can use your cell phone, use iPads in the field, they tried to look at a Tyler product previously that didn't work properly, they never got it implemented. Uh, we tried to do the same thing in Diamond Head and didn't get it implemented, cause I think they sold it before they could actually have it ready, um, but where people can do permitting online, so again, going back to that customer experience, it also means that a builder, such an electrician, a plumber, an AC guy, doesn't have to come in the building to fill out a permit for a house.
Right.
They can do it online, they can do it at six in the morning, pay for it, submit it, turn in what they've gotta do, but they don't have to come through the door. Uh, I think that helps make us more efficient and has a better, I think, interaction with the customer, and then we evaluate everything, we do everything they've gotta do, they can make their payment online, and we email them their permit and say, keep going, uh, but I think it could be a lot more just, I think, more efficient for us. So that's something we're looking at, um, we've been talking about, and that's kinda it I had for permitting. Uh, I did note about the conversation on cell phones, so we can look into that. Next department was building and grounds, again, this was a new department, um, that we had Sissy create, um, looking here, so this is gonna be your senior center, Boys and Girls Club. MLK, no, it's really recreation, but, um, community centers, things that aren't tied to police, fire, city council, city hall.
City hall, old city hall.
You know, but trying to, again, account for those expenses that are tied to these different buildings, okay? Um, so from cleaning to whatever, there isn't, uh, one in there called fire hydrant parts, if you look at that right down the middle under supplies, for fifteen thousand. Um, I didn't know this, but the city has to use general fund dollars to buy fire hydrants, so, um, after seeing that, I just sent a message to, uh, Sissy, I said, let's move that to public works, not the buildings, so that'll get moved.
Why wouldn't that be part of the water system?
It's not the general fund.
Huh.
It's not the general fund.
It's gotta come from the general fund.
Gotta come from the general fund.
Law.
I didn't know that.
But, cause it's really not, you know, water sewer.
But we're gonna move that, that's what, you know, that'll get, come out of that department, go into the public works, so it won't impact your bottom line. Um, that jumped out at me, we were looking through it, I was like, what, what is that?
So, so you're not supposed to use water money for that to do fire hydrants? Because you can't lay a water line without putting the hydrant every five hundred foot by state law, so I would think it'd be part of your water system, cause they were wired you to have it.
I would've thought the same thing, but, I would've thought the same thing, but we're told no, so it's part of your public works.
Lay the line, but you gotta buy the fire hydrant.
So at least the fire hydrant. But that's only a thing that I was, I'm gonna bring, you know, that's gonna get changed, that, that account number or department number is gonna change to go to public works. Um, also in that department, right now, we've got people dedicated who are working these buildings and doing facilities, so, um, in our payroll ordinance, you'll see, we pulled three people out of public works and and assigned them to this department, so that's where you see the payrolls, it's a wash from a staffing pers- perspective, but we just assigned to a different, uh, GL code.
Like somebody cleans after every rental and all.
Somebody's in there, we have one guy, but they're always in the buildings.
Yeah.
You know, constantly working it. On to police, uh, page eleven, again, right now, we have thirty-three full-time positions budgeted, at this time, all positions are filled, one of the positions are filled with a part-time person though, not a full-time person. Um, again, I made a comment, we did have one officer of the thirty-three that had to go overseas, military for, I think it's four hundred days or something like that, um, so that would be down one. Um, if you're looking at the other stuff, you know, those are, what you mentioned, you know, that's gonna.
Also with that, there's one position we need to bring up from eighteen something to twenty-one something, it didn't get brought up last year, we thought it did. And if we, if we can fill it before then, we'll come back and ask, you know, fill it, it's, um, it was that part-time position we had for the court department, but it went full-time, but we, I don't know how we got missed, missed on it, on the, uh, hourly rate, but it did, so it's something we, we're gonna at least have in this budget, but if we can fill it uh, for another full-time position now, we'll come back and ask council to, to approve the, um, rate of pay with all the other officers.
For the police department? And on that position, we have to hold, can we not budget the money, another s- budget or something, cause they hate to be a man short for a whole year, I mean, I know we gotta have that job when they come back.
Well, I think that's budgeted, is it budgeted, is it salary?
We don't have, we don't have, we have this, the position budgeted.
Yes.
But there is a vacancy because he's not here, where you're headed.
That'll probably take overtime to fill his position.
If I hear you right, you're saying, consider budgeting thirty-four people.
Cause we know we're not really paying him anyway.
So that you have thirty-three to run your, run your staff.
Yeah, tell him we'll be a man short the whole year, I understand reason.
Yeah, and you could, but you would have to be willing to commit to him for the filing year.
That's what I'm saying.
To hire.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we go into it knowing, we have to make sure we have, and who knows, maybe four vacancies by the time he comes back, you don't, never know, but just guarantee that we have a spot for him, but don't leave it vacant for a whole year, just.
Is he, is that falling into the same, it's different parameters than the, the FMLA and eighty-four, I mean, it falls way beyond the twelve weeks, right?
Yeah, you, I think you're required to hold it when they.
I was just curious.
Military, deployment or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the more, it's not just the twelve weeks for the military stuff.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you.
We just got a firefighter back that's been gone, oh lord, long time.
Now, seeing what worked a man down all that time, probably.
I agree, I think if you put, I think you budget another FTE, and then as that, and then as it rolls around, if you have one that opens up, you just don't fill it down the road, you know, that gives it.
Cause you got a lot bit of chance of something by cycling out two months, three months, before they come back, instead of leaving a thirteen month vacancy.
One thing the chief asked about is if we take one of these full-time spots and create three or four part-time, like we did with the fire department, create three or four part-time spots to cover a lot of when people's not here and all this and that and all, could we use that one spot in the fire department? I don't know, we got ten spots there, each divided up equally, you know, it's not that many people that work.
That'd be a good idea too, because then you still got the position available and the funds available when he does return.
Yeah, because part, we don't wanna lose this part-time guy, but I don't wanna take up a full-time spot with him, so we can even take that, that position I was telling you about from the court department and, and fill, make, turn that into a part-time position, where we're able to keep him and maybe pick up a couple more part-timers as well, which would be a big help.
What's the calculation for FTE, well, part-time's what, point, point four of the, the FTE?
Huh?
I don't know. What's the calculation for part-time, what's the, whatever, what's the part-time hours that can work, up to twenty, still be considered part-time?
I think it's up to thirty.
Well, this would be like an officer, say, from Gupport wants to come work part-time over here, can come work part-time over.
I think state laws, anything under thirty-two hour, three week consecutive.
It's either thirty or thirty-two.
So that's probably a point seven is a part-time, so I mean, you just don't wanna over.
Yeah, yeah.
Fill the part-time.
This is, this would be on the.
But you're also by doing it, you don't have those other, uh, benefit expenses.
Right.
You know, but what you're talking about, what I hear though, from us, when we leave here, we've gotta put some extra money in that.
Well, you really wouldn't have to put extra money, you put an extra position, because the money's already accounted for, but he's not here.
In that expense, is that what I'm hearing?
The guy that's gone.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, so you would take his salary, you, you would create this thirty-fourth position.
Mm-hmm, yeah, using his salary, but no guy fund his benefits or whatever.
And then next year, we know we got, we're gonna increase by one at least.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, that's good.
Yeah. Because we're getting staffed up, I don't wanna see, still going backwards with it, you know.
And he's brought in a couple of, I mean, I think, two, a week ago, two weeks ago, he introduced with some, some experience.
Yes.
I mean, people have been.
Not needing to go to academy, that's.
Senior in their, in their departments.
I know me and the chief just talking, we talked, no, I don't know if I should say, possibly a differential pay for nighttime people, because a lot of people don't wanna take night shifts and stuff, I mean, I know other cities do it alone, I mean, something to look at too, maybe, might be dollar an hour more to work night shift or something than the day shift or something, because.
Do they do that in other, in other cities, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's.
I know the odds in the provinces.
No, I know, I mean, that's, nurses get, night nurses get paid more than your day nurses.
Yeah.
Uncommon, but I was just curious if that's.
I mean, that's something we can look into.
Just something to look at, I think, something to look at and discuss, cause a lot of people, nighttime's harder for a few reasons, one is just harder until you're dealing with the worst of the worst at nighttime, you, you, you're good people, they're already home in bed, and you're really dealing with the worst of them at that time of night, so.
Credit, credit to the chief, is that, we're in a, from a.
Didn't we look at this once?
Budget standpoint, we're in a much better spot in terms of vacancies, which we don't have any, than we did last year, so that's a credit.
Exactly. Yeah. Oh, yeah, he's done a good job, very, very happy, I just wanna be sure, the new police station and the other few tools we give them, we should be having a great police department, I mean, yeah.
Uh, just to continue on, we do have three thousand dollars for grant writing services, since we did, did a little contract with the consultant, uh, there's twenty thousand dollars plus under training, plus another twenty thousand under training reimbursements, uh, are reimbursable. Um, again, the software maintenance agreements, that's the caliber for police reporting, uh, we just paid the invoice on that, uh, one of our last meetings. And then finally, vehicle repairs is forty-five thousand, um, that's another big item in there, we've got a couple of vehicles that are a little bit more dated, that have given us some trouble.
We're still waiting on, this year, they were supposed to be built in June, but maybe we'll hear something soon on the.
Should we go up a little bit on that, Mike, cause it looks like twenty twenty-one, we were seventy-six, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, we were fifty-one, and then we were forty, forty-two, and now we're looking at probably about sixty thousand for this year.
Yeah, one of those vehicles was a mistake. It was a fix, which didn't fix the problem all the way, then it was another fix, and then when they got it fixed, it was another fix. And, and we ended up spending close to thirteen, fifteen thousand dollars on this old vehicle. But you, yeah, we'll look at that number, make sure it, it's in.
And maybe just raise it to fifty or something like this, to.
Yeah.
We're not short.
Okay. They might have another line item to take care of some of that.
And that's pretty much on police, any questions, any comments, we've had some good discussion. Fire is pretty simple, one thing I think, comment there is staffing wise, we're not recommending any changes, there's twenty-two full-time officers, um, and twelve, I'm sorry, ten part-time firefighters in that department right now.
There's twenty-two full-time and ten part-time?
Ten part-time.
They're full.
They're full?
Mm-hmm. Think.
Yes, we just hired a guy back, we had an opening, we just hired one, a guy that left us back.
I was looking at the spreadsheet, I'm trying to remember off my head.
We don't have ten part-timers.
I think the part-time might have some holes.
It's got some, but we never all full there.
We still having issues where we don't have enough people on the shift at, at both fire stations at all times.
Not unless, now, they're filling positions with overtime as well, um, we do have, I don't know when the next academy class is, but we do have a couple, still gotta go to that, but again, this time here, we had two people that left us, that was in good grace, re-applied to come back, and so they selected one of them, and if anything comes up, we have another one, that's at least one more wanting to come back.
Yeah, good.
Um, we do, um, have a proposal from them that, we're gonna try to do it this fiscal year, um, using their fire fund, but, uh, their turnout gear, it's like seventy thousand dollars, there's a life expectancy on that type of equipment.
Right.
It's there. Um, so we're, they asked when we were meeting by budget, they were talking about for next year, and we kinda looked at it and said, we may be able to pull that trigger this year and just use that fun. Maybe it also, if we wanted to do it, cause it, these last several years, so you may wanna do it on lease purchase and pay for it over two or three years. Um, so those are things we're looking at. In addition, our guys, and, and we learned this, uh, kinda, I'm gonna call it the hallway, but, um, they don't have, really, our firemen don't have dress, anything to wear. Those dress gear, I'm gonna call it.
Dress, dress uniforms, whatever.
We saw that back in December.
I was just looking under surprise. We haven't, we haven't budgeted anything for uniforms in three years.
Well, it's, it's under another, it's under the quarter mill.
We're able to put it out of that fire fund.
For the regular, but.
Gotcha, gotcha.
If they're training and stuff, that's fire fund.
They don't have that, that dress.
Like, back in December.
Said they never had.
We had an event that, we no, we noticed that was something that just jumped out, and I was like, man, we gotta, probably gotta get some guys, some, some black, just black pants, black shirt.
Right, right.
With a logo on it, I mean, just something respectable.
Less than eight thousand, so we're looking at that now as well.
Six thousand. So we're looking to, to bring that to y'all.
We'll have it on, uh, next year.
And we expecting the building to jump up that high?
What building?
The insurance on the buildings?
Twenty percent, right?
Nobody's going from sixty-eight to one fifteen, that's, that's not twenty percent.
Again, it's twenty percent, but, um, but I.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, if the other was correct.
We're trying to, we're trying to put the, the expenses to the right department, so hopefully, that may be, gotta get cleaned up between a different department, but it's, it's the twenty percent.
Gotcha.
Uh, but we're doing a, I had Jamie talk with Sissy earlier and just kinda looking at our insurance bill and said, Jamie, we need to make sure we know what departments, what, what building is, goes, is getting accounted for here.
Cause that, that would be both fire.
That is both fire departments is what should be there.
Same thing with electricity. If you see the electricity down there.
Yeah.
Right now, they just found out, station two is being charged to the six-oh-three lights somewhere out there.
Being charged to what?
Six-oh-three lighting.
The lighting.
By doing this exercise, it's like, wait, they found that utility bill has been literally just getting mis, misappropriated.
Same thing, it's coming out of public works.
Paying it, but.
Being paid, just being paid.
Get on fine.
So that's why I think, is this, is it, as we massage this and work this, I think it's gonna really provide more details to y'all and, and internally to the departments. I have requested in that department, um, I had two firms give us some quotes. I have not reviewed them yet. I've got them the day before yesterday. Um, to go and analyze the windows.
Oh, geez.
Um, kinda go analyze them, come back, give us, what's the problem, what's the recommended solution, what's the estimated cost?
Aren't they in backwards?
Fire station one.
I don't know, but they're leaking.
That's why I tell them, it's real simple. Most of them are in backwards.
So, is it in backwards with the gas inside? There's three glass pieces inside each of those windows. Some of them are, the gas in there is busted. So we are looking at that, trying to figure out how to solve that problem to make it a respectable building. But it, you know, some of the water holes above windows, I can see it caulked. You know, that was one thing pipe, you know, popped out, but hopefully, again, we'll be bringing that to y'all. And trying to find at least a solution for fixing that.
Get somebody to give us a price on some lighting on six-oh-three station.
We work, oh, the station, they're looking at that.
I mean, the outside lights in the parking lot, you know, even if we did some kinda, they don't need the fancy lights, just put a regular light over there.
Regular streetlight.
Yeah, regular streetlight or something. To light that corner up, just dark.
They're trying to cheat, I don't know, I don't know what Ronnie found on that. They, they're looking at the lights out there.
All right, moving on to Public Works, page fifteen. Um, again, no staffing for changes, um, but we do have a couple of employees that we've moved from Public Works into buildings and grounds. Um, we got twenty-eight employees between both departments, that's building ground and, uh, utilities, oh, I'm sorry, building grounds and, and, uh, PW. Currently, eight positions are open in Public Works.
Out of how many?
Eight.
Number, out of how many, you said?
Out of twenty-eight. It's significant.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons when we look at salary next meeting, talking about, not like we did back in December, when we look at HEO and say, can we go ahead and across the board and look at a significant increase?
We were talking about that at, at MML in the meeting.
Y'all were?
Last one I went to was, you know, towns of, of our size, basically, and it was just kind of an open discussion. Um, uh, Pastor Shan, Mayor was in there, Wayland Mayor was in there, and myself and some others. That was one of the main points was, you know, how do you, how do you even compete with the bigger cities around you and keeping people, uh, just attracting people? You know, and then, just, just, just not that many people out there nowadays looking to do this kinda work, you know?
Well, even if you just go to Burger King and, you know, I, we stopped at Arby's back in Meridian, and the doors were locked. The thing on the doors clearly said they were open. It was drive-through only, and the reason is they can't find staff.
They can't find staff, but, but even, even now, they're, they're paying.
Much less, making ten bucks, twelve bucks an hour.
They're, they're paying twelve to fifteen dollars an hour at some places.
Yeah, we lost one, we lost a good one.
Trying to find staff.
Little young one, too, and, and, and some of that is I fault for not moving him.
So that's what we're, again, we'll be coming back, cause we have to, how do we fill those positions?
My only question is, will the five percent across the board be enough for the ones?
We, we have a different pay scale coming from them.
We've gotta look at.
That aren't in the fifteen dollars, you know what I'm saying? Cause you talk to them, just getting three dollar an hour raise to move them up to fifteen.
Yes.
You gotta look at that entire department.
That's what we're doing. We're looking at, we're looking at bring out minimum wage in there at fifteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, that's what they were talking about.
And then we're gonna, we'll step up everybody accordingly.
That's what I'm saying, okay. There'll be something different.
Yeah, we're not gonna have a hundred peo-, you know, everybody in there fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour. You know, the ones there, you know?
You gotta take your water operator and move them up, you know?
And most of them, not low raises. Once the one's up there, it might be, you know, dollar, dollar and quarter, might be a little bit more, you know? But trying to keep the steps in there and all. And we still have a little tweaking to do on it, but that, for the most part, all of that is included in this already, in this budget. So we're not looking at much other, we're looking at as far as expenses with them.
Even being shorthanded on Public Works has been phenomenal lately. I mean, really has, had a full staff, imagine what they could be doing.
And, uh, with the leadership of, um, Ronnie, I can't, I can't tell you, that is one of the hardest workers I've seen in a long time.
Make sure we keep him, too.
I mean, he is, I mean, he, he wants to do well, I mean, you know?
Yeah, and that's something we wanna look at, too. You know, as far as a raise, cause he, he didn't get a raise last year, but he just started, and he didn't get a raise.
I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what our inventory situation is, but one of the cities was saying, um, that one of the things they did for some of their directors was they had older vehicles that, that weren't being used all the time or were sitting in the yard, but that still ran and, and operated well. And in lieu of a raise, they gave them a take-home vehicle, um, and, you know, cut out their cost of, of getting to and from the, to and from work.
And Ronnie probably should be taken, cause he's on call.
And their insurance, you know, and, and just in, in saving the insurance and the, the to and from work and, and having a vehicle note. You know, and they said they, they, they haven't had so far, knock on wood, an incident where someone was doing something they shouldn't have been doing in a, in a, you know? Outside of, of work hours or anything like that, that, that caused any issues. It's, it's allowed them to retain two or three people that they felt like they would've lost otherwise, that are, you know, key personnel, as they call them.
Right.
And, and I think that retention of those key personnel is a big, big thing, but it, it's sometimes requires to be thinking outside the box and not just about giving another fifty cents or a dollar an hour, you know, cause can't always afford that, but if we got something sitting around that could be a perk, that, you know, that, that may be a, a way to go. I mean, they were just saying they had an old truck that.
I think it's, you, you think, you think outside the box.
Yeah, I mean, they had an old truck that the police, the police weren't using anymore, and they gave it to the Parks and Recreation Director and, and, you know?
Speaking of trucks, we're looking at some fast, we're gonna bring, see about purchasing.
Yeah, we need some more of those, uh, I don't know how they work out with that hundred-dollar forestry truck, but anything we can give for a hundred dollars.
Looking at that, too. Matter of fact, we're looking at, it's, it's something where they could turn that over to us.
Those were good. Yeah.
But they're looking at trying to find another one or two for them, for the fire department.
Right.
And then they could turn two trucks over.
When's our ladder truck get paid off? Soon? Was it a ten-year loan?
We purchased that in like fourteen, thirteen, fourteen?
Was it like a ten-year loan, or was it longer, was it twenty-year loan? Thought it was like a ten-year.
I thought so. I, I think it's coming.
That's what I'm wondering. If we can just check, uh, when that gets paid off and if we got some money.
Bring some more vehicles in.
Yeah, I think that's, what was the price of that?
I just wrote myself a note, I'm sure, I can get to that answer.
Yeah, I was just curious, cause I know that's, I know we got two.
Forty, forty or fifty thousand a year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking it's a ten-year loan, ten or twelve, maybe.
It shouldn't be much more than that.
Million-dollar truck.
Oh, yeah.
You know? It was four something, five hundred thousand, but yeah, it's probably a million today.
It was, it was. And what we, we, and as soon as we do do that, we need to turn it right back into it, though, and get another one, so we don't get in a jam to where.
We don't have.
We purchase them those back to back, because of, they were shot.
Yeah, yeah. I was just curious, I just thought about that.
Are those only certified for a certain amount, amount of time, or did it get outdated?
They get reclassified, recertified, I mean, they can come as long as everything's pumping on it and everything.
As long as it's working.
Get the pressure and everything, they come in, check all the things and, you know, whatever they gotta do and all, but you just get them.
But I thought there was some, some of our trucks that you couldn't, they couldn't be over a certain age or something, or they would lose their certification, but maybe I'm thinking of something different.
We got good washer.
It would have to be old, but I think as long, as long as they meet all the requirements and all, they can be recertified. I'll check with Ronald on that, Monty.
We keep good washers and dryers and stuff at both fire stations and stuff like that for them?
Should. You, you know, over at station one, we're looking at that, with the bed, some, some interior, you know, with this and all, cleaning up, fixing up.
I'm looking at trying to get them some new mattresses, some new ca, like furniture that they sit on regularly. Mattresses have been, to me, walking through, they look dated. Told him, I was like, go take a walk through there, and you tell me what you think.
And you're not talking about much money.
Yeah, so to say.
So a couple of twin mattresses. So those are things we're trying to do, look at, doing now, over the summer.
Yeah, yeah, make them comfortable.
To me, I, you know, as we even, working with the architects in the building.
Spend a lot of time there.
They're working, might as well make comfortable.
Yeah, you know, we just, it hadn't been long ago, I mean, but, you know, none of that lasts like it used to, but, you know, we had recliners and that and everything, and, and they're worn and everything. Different ones brought this or that, we just need to, need to get them what they need.
Yeah.
Those things, I mean, you've got a plan that every, several years, probably, you need to replace that.
Yeah. Replace some of that.
Various men sleeping in, on different same bed and just, so just changing that stuff out.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, um, so to me, that, that goes back to the quality of life.
Yeah.
For your firemen. So when you wanna recruit and retain good staff, you know, that's one of those areas that's not too hard to accomplish.
Yeah.
Put a check mark by.
Yeah.
It doesn't break the bank, you know, but if they're off telling their friends, like, yeah, you ought to see the mattresses in Bay St. Louis, you know?
Exactly.
They're going to Harrison County, they're going somewhere else, they're not happy. So to me, I was talking to, uh, the former city manager in DeArberville, when they were building the fire station. And he said, when they met with the firemen to talk about what they really wanted, you know, one of the main things they wanted? A room with an Xbox. I mean, it got back to it, was quality of life, you know? So, um, those are things like these windows, the AC unit that we're trying to work on, the mattresses or little furniture, there's some things that I think can be improved.
Yeah.
Um, continuing on, on, uh, Public Works, just, again, if you look at just the expenses down here, you'll see more details in the different line items. Um, this is something that, uh, Ronnie and Debbie had kinda asked for and talking to them and breaking some of those up. It used to just kinda be a supplies account. And everything kinda went under supplies, you know, but now we kinda try to break things down. Um, overall, I think that the, for total supplies, it increased by like forty-five, thirty-four thousand. Uh, but it's also with Ronnie and his staff just doing a lot more work, even with less people.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so, um, engineering under there, uh, for, again, that's the things that are in-house, uh, projects, they can go kinda look at. Um, or not really things that are full project, but, you know, we may have some billable hours to Jason and his team, is thirty thousand. Grass cutting is no change, that's our same contract at four hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Um, the streetlights, I always like to point that out, three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for your streetlights. Um, and then we have a maintenance agreement on streetlights. That's our Mississippi power agreement, um, for the highway, and that's forty-four thousand. The software agreement with City Works, uh, is fifteen thousand. Oh, there, that's that, uh, software maintenance agreement stuff. Um, that gets spread for City Works between utilities and Public Works, to, we see that in the fund again. Um, and they're, um, looking to, um, increase that, I think it's fifteen thousand is the current contract, it goes up by, to like twenty thousand, but um, to add store room, you made a comment about inventory earlier, but store room is a, is part of a, a module with City Works that allows your purchasing person to track all the inventory. So when something goes out on a work order, it reduces your inventory, so it lets you know when things are getting low. Um, and it really just keeps better track of it. And I've heard from, you know, Biloxi and, uh, Biloxi, I'm sorry, Gulfport and Long Beach in particular, use the same software that has been extremely beneficial to them. Uh, our team, Debbie and Ronnie went over and toured and met with Gulfport to watch what they were doing and see how they're doing it. Um, and they've already started implementing some of the changes for controls, um, already.
And Mike, did we move some of the money that we had budgeted for repairs outside equipment, um, to a different category?
Where are you?
Uh, right in the middle of page sixteen and, um, forty-eight thousand for repairs outside equipment.
I see, repair and maintenance outside?
Yeah, eight hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be one, a lot of that's gonna be going to that other department to the, when it comes to the buildings in particular.
Okay, so going down from seventy, we've gone to forty-eight thousand, but that's, that's because it's been apportioned somewhere else.
Been moved around, yeah.
I wanna make sure I'm looking in the right department.
It's oh-one, three hundred, six thirty-five, equipment, repairs outside equipment under streets and public works, page, page sixteen up at the top, pack at page seventeen.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, again, I'm, but I'm gonna attribute, I'll ask that question, uh, to Miss Sissy, but I believe this, the big changes that we've seen here, and you see a reduction of about, uh, two hundred and, where was my number?
About two hundred and forty thousand.
Two sixty for outs, the contracting services total is a reduction, but a big chunk of that is, um, the electricity and repairs and maintenance that are being allocated to these other departments. That used to all just be grouped under Public Works.
Which I'm sure, yeah, I mean, this is repairs, so it probably is part of that that's been reallocated somewhere.
Elevators, AC units, those things.
Maintenance lighting, forty-four thousand, what's that for, you know?
Uh, that might be a contract.
That's that Mississippi power contract.
Mississippi power.
For the highway.
Or we're gonna put anything to restore, replacing all them light bulbs that's tore down and hit by cars?
Ronnie's putting that together now. Um, we're hoping to get something done in this year's budget.
That's what I'm saying, in this year, current year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Working with, um, I think Weaver, he's calling them and a couple of other ones, trying to get some prices to come in.
Okay.
You know, we got maybe three or four on ninety, but we have the poles for them.
Yeah.
We have a couple poles for six-oh-three.
I mean, start at the intersections first and get them knocked out first, you know, that way.
I don't know what you can do with them.
I know what you can do with them, that probably won't let you. Put them parking bumper things like that in front of a store by them posts when they hit it.
Hit it.
It hurts your car more than it hurts the post, and you're not driving away, but.
So that's kinda Public Works, uh.
I guess it's a safety thing where they gotta be breakaway if a car hits them, it's why they, they fall when they get hit so easily.
Any comments on Public Works? Where we have it, or?
No.
Um, Parks and Rec will be page seventeen. Uh, again, no staffing change there. There's three employees that have been budgeted there, including the rector, rector. And then again, previously, I think last year we'd moved, maybe it was the year before, moved people from Public Works who cut the grass out of the fields, kinda put them under that department. So that's already been done, there's no changes there. Uh, contractual services increased, uh, since expenses moved from PW to this department. So if we just look at the overall highlighted line, it went from ten thousand to fifty thousand, and that's, again, moving expenses that were previously charged to Public Works are now being charged to that department. Software maintenance agreement, ten thousand. Uh, that is, um, basically us trying to budget for possibly a recreation software, um, to help manage recreation, but as well manage the community centers. For things like online reservations, online payments, being able to check a calendar, see if dates are available.
I can, I can give you a system, I pay you, you pay about a hundred and twenty dollars a month for it, and it'll do most of that for you.
Really?
Event rental system, without use of my slides. It depends how many pieces you have in it.
Mm-hmm.
But they can book online, pay online, they can do everything.
They can see if it's available.
See if it's available by date.
I would not talk to you.
I'll show you.
I just think, again, that goes back to. I just think, again, that goes back to a customer service to me. What's the experience that somebody's gonna have if they're calling going, hey, I'm looking for so-and-so, let me have them call you back, they're out having lunch or whatever, but. Chances are somebody's looking at the website and looking for that type of stuff at night.
Yeah.
So if they're able to look and see if their date's available in two thousand twenty-four for a wedding, they can pick it up, go, the date's available, I want to reserve it, I'm putting a hundred fifty dollar deposit down.
And it's real time.
Electronic real time, boom.
The next person looked five minutes later, two minutes later, it's booked.
Part of that also, you know, the, the idea of maybe redoing our, uh, our rental agreement. So that, A, we have a, a consistent rental agreement for all facilities across the board, mostly just with a form that says, what are you renting? And have some boxes or whatever, but, uh, making sure the language is in there for, you know, if you do damage, if you don't clean it, you know, those types of things. Or what are your responsibilities? And then electronic signature, you know, so those are things that are out there that can be done, and I just think it improves the overall customer experience.
My software does all that.
Improves, I think, efficiencies for our staff as well.
Oh.
You know, so.
Yeah.
Hey, one thing on that as well, uh, you know, the guy that we wanted to turn it down, that guy turned it down, we interviewed the third guy again, you know. Going around the bushes there. So we're, we're still trying to find a director.
Looks hopeless. This is the third year we're trying to get one, huh?
The final.
Two years now, we ain't got one yet.
Yeah.
But we hope, we, I don't know.
The final.
Disappointed we didn't get the other ones, but.
Uh, the final department was transfers out. That was something we did last year. Um, so instead of having all these departments with transfers in and out and nothing, I just kind of cleaned it up. But number one I'd point out there to you is that first one, transfer out to emergency fund, four hundred thousand, that was in this year's budget. Uh, we did that already. So we're trying to do that again, using the gaming, uh, funds. We've seen an increase over the last couple of years, so we're trying to, we're trying to do that again. Uh, the rest are some bond payments, uh, that we're obligated to, the fire insurance, was it fourth mill? Uh, and then county road and bridge that comes into the general fund. We received one check, I didn't know this, um, from Jimmy Ladner's office. So you actually have to, you only get one check, it has to go into one checkbook, and then we have to literally write a check to go the other way, so we have journal entries to move it. This is the move it to the road and bridge fund. That's your general fund, basically.
Okay.
All in an hour and forty minutes or so. So I've got a couple of takeaways from y'all. If y'all have any other questions, um, shoot them to us.
Okay.
Things you want to see, whatever.
Hey, Sissy put together too.
Oh, yeah.
Just, you know, talking about the raises and all this and that, the cost of living across the board. And in twenty-one, it went up four point seven percent, twenty-two, eight percent, to, you know, and twenty-three, we're five point three percent right now.
This is inflation numbers.
That's the inflation that, you know, so.
What's it cost to eat?
Yeah.
You know?
Just anything.
Eighteen percent more than.
I was having a conversation yesterday with one of our employees who, you know, works a second, I mean, multiple employees work second jobs. They work forty hours a week for us, and then, you know, go somewhere else, cause they're like, she was said, she was hoping to give up that second job, but she was like, I can't, because. And so I said, trust me, I looked at my, my own checkbook in May and looked at how much we spent on just groceries and kind of that kind of shopping. I told my wife, I was like, look at this number, this is, this is inflation, you know, so. We've got to hopefully use something that helps to pay some bills. I don't think it's getting better.
Yeah.
Personally.
Well, because just like us, once you put all your employees at fifteen bucks an hour, how do you go back cheaper? You're not. Nobody's gonna take a pay cut three dollars an hour, so if you were on the grocery store or whatever business you run, then you bump people up. To get anybody, you can't just cut them back down, unless we really get a, a shift change in the employee employer relationship. Right now, the employee has the upper hand. Employer, employer don't have the upper hand no more.
I don't know what's caused it, but there's such a shortage of employees, that people don't, aren't willing and able to work or whatever, whatever it is. I mean, you know, you probably having trouble finding people doing your, your company.
I had eighteen employees in twenty twenty, I run nine now, and I can barely keep nine.
Yeah.
I've just learned to not worry no more, take what I can take and do what I can do, and don't worry about the rest.
So next, uh, obviously, we have a council meeting Wednesday night, because, uh, we have Fourth of July on Tuesday. Um, we'll get the agenda out by tomorrow night with all the attachments and all for you. If y'all have anything to add to agenda you want, please let us know. I'll do my notes to y'all like I normally do. Um, and then we'll be, probably Monday, finalizing the salary spreadsheets, um, that y'all normally get. And looking at that part for our Thursday workshop with y'all, looking at salaries.
All right, sounds good, man. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Again, I would like to thank Sissy really did very good work on this over the last week too. Um, not to mention the chart of accounts stuff, that is huge. I mean, I've seen another comptroller do it too, and it's tedious, so.
Thank you, Sissy.
Yeah, thank you, Sissy. Once we're done though, we'll have a lot better handle and be able to see where you're bleeding and where you're not, when it's financials, yes. Thank you. I thought we had a lot of good conversation myself.
Yeah.
Even though it was a small.